All these books. We need to go digital.
I don't know. That's a scary prospect.
I'm gonna have to have a wheelbarrow to bring everything down here.
Well, you can go digital.
Yeah.
I'd like to call to order the Mobile County Commission Commission Conference in preparation for our September 27th, 2021 regular meeting of the Mobile County Commission. Before we start, we'd just like to take a moment of silence to remember Councilmember Manzi and his contributions and to remember his family during that hour of bereavement. So, I think we have a presentation this morning, at least one presentation. Do we want to do that first or do the agenda first?
Uh... Is... Which presentation?
Budget presentation.
Oh, that... Okay. Um, I don't... I think we could probably... Would you... I'll let... Would you rather go first? We'll go first.
Okay. All right.
Okay. I thought you meant we had a resolution.
Don't forget to hit the light. The light.
We just go down. It's gonna be over here.
It'd be great. Green table.
It would be a short. It was like short. Yeah? Are you sure you're gonna sit too late?
You can sit on where. It doesn't matter.
It's with much pleasure that I present Mobile County Commission's Fiscal Year 2022 General Fund Budget. The proposed 2022 General Fund Budget is $192.2 million, which is up $32.9 million, or 21% over fiscal year 2021. The table that you see in front of you displays revenue 2021 versus 2022. I'll hit the high points or the high dollar amounts. The amounts budgeted for taxes increased 4% due to a projected increase in sales and abhorrent taxes. The amount budgeted in 2022 for taxes is actually only 1% more than the actual amount collected in 2020. Intergovernmental revenue increased by 11% due to a projected increase in simplified seller's use tax. For the first year since my tenure, we are budgeting $25 million in operating transfers from other funds. The transfers include a $16.2 million of ARP revenue loss funds as provided by the American Rescue Plan. Treasury allows these funds to be used for normal governmental activities. This chart shows the composition of Mobile County Commission's revenue by major tax... by major category. You can see from this chart that 53% of the county's revenue is generated by taxes. 19% is generated by all the various other categories. 15% is generated by intergovernmental revenue. And 13% this year is generated by operating transfers in. I'm often asked about the trends in the county's revenue collections, more specifically, property, sales, and simplified seller's use taxes. As you can see on this graphic of property taxes, abhorrent taxes have increased $4 million since 2018. The increase is due to the state's adoption of the 2015 appraisal manual. The state was previously using the 2005 manual. In addition, property taxes are projected to increase due to the record value in home Now, let's look at sales taxes. Sales taxes have increased to an average of $62.6 million from 2018 to 2021. We anticipate that we will end the year with tax collections in excess of $64 million. Simplified seller's use taxes have increased dramatically from 2018 to 2022. Now, let's look at expenditures. General government expenditures increased 27% over fiscal year 2021. Public safety increased 8%. Environmental compliance increased 9%. Debt increased 17% due to the issuance of $20 million of capital improvement warrants. Operating transfers out increased due to an infusion of $3.7 million to the public works department for capital equipment and $3 million to the county improvement fund. If we look at the expenditures by function, you can tell from this graphic that 43% of the county's annual budget goes toward public safety activities and 37% goes toward general Okay, now, let's get to the part everybody always wants to know about, so let's get started. Okay, the 2022 budget includes a 5% COLA in this year's budget. Thank you, commissioners. It includes a $2,500 one-time nonrecurring benefit in November 2021, and there will be one budgeted in November of 2022. We expanded the building inspections department, and we have expanded information technology that department. Now, let's look at 2022 capital investments. We have investments in capital equipment this year. We have a capital investment in the county's ERP software. This implementation is the largest since 1999 and will completely revolutionize how the county manages its fiscal and human resource operations. We've increased commission district funds by $2.5 million in each district. We also have investments in the county's future aquatic center and other county district So, the big question is, how much is it? You can see from this chart right here, we kind of detail how much each particular item costs. So, for the COLA, that's gonna cost approximately $3.4 million, which is a net. The ERP software is gonna be $3 million in the first year. Subsequent years will be around $750,000. The one-time nonrecurring benefit for each employee will be approximately $4.5 million. We have capital investments of $5 million. Commission district funds are $7.5 million, and other district improvements are $3 million. That gives you the total of $26.5 million. So, how do we pay for it? Well, 65% comes from the American Rescue Plan revenue loss calculation. That's for general government activities. And 35% comes from the operating other transfers. Okay. This is a quick and easy PowerPoint, so this is... Excuse me. Concludes my PowerPoint presentation. Just want to give kudos to Lee and Vanessa, my staff. We have worked... They worked diligently with me, late nights and on the weekends, so I just want to give kudos to them and to all the elected officials and their staffs that took my calls Saturday. I was making a lot of calls Saturday and Sunday. And, of course, to the commissioners for their continued support in the work that we do. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dana. And kudos to you and to your staff, Lee and Vanessa, and everybody involved in preparation of this budget. I think people really, for the most part, don't have any idea what all goes in, how much time and effort goes in, and it starts months before this actual presentation takes place and hundreds of hours. And just know how much we appreciate all the effort.
Thank you.
I would like to echo that to you and your staff. I've looked at the state budget when I've been in Montgomery and the sheriff's office budget when I was there, and I'll be honest with you, this is laid out to where even a boy from Theodore like myself can look at it and understand it without a whole lot of complication. It's really laid out well and a real...
It is.
Self-explanatory.
Very straightforward.
Thank you.
You guys did a great job.
Madam President, I know there are representatives here from some of our other elected agencies throughout the county. I didn't know if any of them... I think you've got the full report. She gave the highlights, but this is the full report that you have.
Yeah, they should have their departmental budgets.
I don't know if any of you have any questions now, but if any come up between now and Monday when we actually vote on the budget, I know Dana will be happy to... and her staff would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Certainly. Thank you.
Mr. Bourne, is that you?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
I have to do a double check.
I just... Okay.
The season of beards for everybody.
So, Tyler, you need a couple more years for yours.
Good one.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you all for being here as always, and thanks for working with the staff to get this done. Okay. Anything else? Okey-dokey, Mr. Hodge.
Any speakers?
Oh.
No one signed up to speak today. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks.
Number one, approve the minutes of the regular meeting of September 13th, 2021. Number two, approve a list of claims. Number three, hold a public hearing so any citizen of the county shall be given an opportunity to be heard. Number four, approve internship agreement with the University of South Alabama for onsite internship experience of nine students enrolled in the school of computing during the fiscal year 2021, 2022, for a total cost of $134,492. Number five, approve a agency grant agreement with the State of Alabama Department of Youth Services for Transitions Continuing Care Program, including in-home counseling during fiscal year 2021, 2022, in amount of $1,066,460. Number six, approve a performance contract with The Bridge, Inc., for the operation of the Transitions Continuing Care Program and in-home counseling program during fiscal year 2021, 2022, for a total sum of $1,066,460, contingent upon receipt of funding from the State of Alabama of Youth Services. Number seven, adopt a resolution authorized from requests of the 13th Judicial Court Police to dispose of certain items. Number eight, approve amendment to the professional services agreement with Tetra Tech related to U.S. Department of Treasury Emergency Rental Assistance Program to incorporate assurances of compliance with civil rights requirements as required by the Treasury. Number nine, authorize amendment to subrecipping agreement with the City of Saraland, Alabama for facility expansion of Cleveland Home to benefit special needs persons to extend the term. Number 10, approve lease expiration agreement with Alterpoint terminating 99-year lease agreement with Mobile Association of Retarded Citizens dated February 8th, 1987. Alterpoint acquired the lease upon merger with Mark in 2019 and no longer need of the subject property. Number 11, authorize submitting a grant application to the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs on behalf of the Mobile County District Attorney's Office for the continuation of the Domestic Violence Initiative Grant in amount of $58,101.16, with a local match in the amount of $19,367.05. The application is due to be submitted no later than midnight on September 30th, 2021. Number 12, approve appropriation contract with African Town Heritage Preservation Foundation in amount of $25,000 to be paid from District 1 funds for general operating expenses. Number 13, authorize revising Administration Department Number 2 policy. Authorize signatures for requests for leave, training forms, comp time forms, and payroll register. This policy is to clarify the delegation of signatures for requests of leave, training forms, comp time forms, and payroll register. Number 14, approve sponsorship agreement with the American Heart Association, Inc., in amount of $2,500 to be divided as follows. Number 15, approve First Amendment to the Treasury Consulting Services Agreement with PFM Asset Management to expand the scope of services to be provided and make corresponding changes to the compensation to be paid. Number 16, approve an option to enter into a purchase agreement with approximately one... for approximately 100 acres from Linksmann's Properties, a Florida limited liability company, by conversion from Linksmann Golf Club of Mobile, Inc., a Florida corporation located on and around St. Andrews Lane, commonly known as Linksmann's Golf Course, for $850,000, subject to final legal review. Approval of this option will require final commission approval once the conditions for the purchase have been approved by the commission.
Commissioners, we are waiting on certain contingencies. When those informations provide to the commission and commission approves that, then we could move forward with the purchase. Commissioner, I think that's what Commissioner Doitt and I chatted about as well, so...
Yeah, I'm satisfied with that and excited about the project. It's something I started working on or looking into prior to even being elected, so I would like to add that the appraisal price for that property was $1.2 million.
Roughly $1,250,000.
Yeah, 100. So, through a lot of negotiation with the property owner, the real estate agency, and Jay and I working with them, I think we were able to get a pretty good price or get the property at a pretty good price.
So, what are the overall plans?
Well, as slow as things happen...
Welcome to government.
It's the government. I thought we'd be playing golf there by now, but we're not. So, the overall plan, and it's not been really discussed a whole lot because it's been a lot of behind-the-scenes things, but I think... Well, my goal is to eventually open it back up as a golf course for the public, for Mobile County. You know, the city has a golf course, and we have a lot of golfers in our community. To include our high schools, you know, they pay a lot of money right now to play golf, so I'm hoping that at some point, we can enter into some kind of agreement with the school system to have our high school teams play and practice and middle school teams play and practice at this golf course if we ever get it opened.
So, basically, the same footprint when it was opened before and...
It'll be...
Pro shop.
It will be sort of the same footprint, other than there are some things that Tina Sanchez and I are working on to... Because there is direct access to the Dog River, which gives you direct access to the Mobile Bay, and there's a lot of plans for some parks and also putting this on the Blue Wave Trail for the kayakers and... Because there's a lot of water over there that accesses that, so it'll be similar to the same footprint it is now, and it's not really... It's not an operating golf course, hasn't been for about 12 years, but it's not in horrible condition. I mean, it's gonna take some work to get it to where it needs to be, but through the neighborhood association there, they have kept the owners pretty diligent on keeping the grass at least mowed. I mean, it's not... The greens aren't greens, but they're there, and so it won't take as much work as building a new golf course, but it's gonna take a little work and a little time. And just as, you know, anything else, it'd probably be done in several phases as far as pro shops, and I would like to see opportunity to have a banquet hall there so people can have receptions or weddings and things of that nature, too. But those things will have to come later. We'd like to get the golf course renovated and operating and then go from there on it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number 17 needs to be voted at the conference. Approve Smart Dollar Master Services Agreement with Lampo Group Doing Business as Smart Dollar for the provision of an online financial wellness program related to budgeting, savings, and paying off debt for interested employees for a three-year term at annual cost of $36,800.
So moved.
Number 18, approve reappointment of John T. Mayo and Kimberly Knowles to serve on the Mobile County Housing Authority each for a term of five years. Number 19, we need to hold a public hearing. Hold a public hearing to receive citizens' comment about the 2020 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report for the Community Development Block Grant and the Home Program. This report has been available for the public since September 5th, 2021.
The public hearing is now in session. Are there any speakers for or against? Hearing none, the public hearing is now closed.
Number 20, authorize adoption and submission of the 2020 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. 21, approve termination of the website hosting agreement with Fusion Point Media, effective October 31st, 2021, and direct to county administrator to provide no less than 15 days written notice. 22, authorize subrecipping agreement with Via Health and Fitness, Inc., for the amount of $33,220 for food pantry and senior services program under the Community Development Block Grant. 23, authorize subrecipping agreement with United Suburbal Policy of Mobile, Inc., for the amount of $30,000 for the food pantry and respite services programs under the Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus. 24, authorize subrecipping agreement with AIDS Alabama South for the amount of $30,000 for transportation services programs under the Community Development Block Grant. 25, authorize subrecipping agreement with the Vontaire America Southeast, Inc., for the amount of $40,000 for food pantry programs in the cities of Pritchett, Sims, and Bayou La Batre under the Community Development Block Grant. 26, approve amendment number 6 with WOS Design, Inc., to update Escataba Hollow Park and Camp Ground Master Plan.
And I would just mention that that's because of the acquisition of additional properties, so we've been able to expand the master plan.
Okay.
27, approve amendment to the Mobile County Park Initiative Contract with Moffett and Nickel, Inc., dated June 23rd, 2021, to add Task 3A data collection and site assessment for Chickasaw RV Park. 28, authorize acceptance of a grant award and subrecipping agreement from the Alabama Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for the Mobile County Dirt Road Paving Program Project in amount of $10,084,000 with no match required pending legal review. 29, approve professional service agreement with Deer Oaks EAP Services for a three-year term, beginning October 1st, 2021, and ending September 30th, 2024, for provision of an employee assistance program. Number 30, adopt a Mobile County budget for fiscal year 2021, October 1st, 2021, through September 30th, 2022. 31, approve appropriation contract with Dauphin Island Sea Lab Foundation in amount of $250,000 from the General Fund. Other agency support funds for an outdoor classroom at Dauphin Island Sea Lab. 32, sponsorship agreement... Approve a sponsorship agreement with the Alabama Kidney Foundation in a total amount of $2,500 to be divided as follows. 33, approve sponsorship agreement with the Simmons Women's Club, Inc., in amount of $500 from District 2 funds for its 2021 Christmas tour and shop hop event. 34, approve sponsorship agreement with Camp Rappa Hope Foundation, Inc., in a total amount of $750 to be divided as follows. 35, approve sponsorship agreement with Our Sister's Closet in a total amount of $1,500 to be divided as follows. 36, approve amending 2021 Capital Improvement Plan to create project South Creola Drive roadway improvements in the city of Creola. The budget for this project is $125,000. This amendment creates a new project, South Creola Drive roadway improvements. This amendment also allocates $120,000 for the budget from the 2021 Capital Improvement Plan District 1 unallocated funds. 37, approve appropriation contract with Mobile Ballet in amount of $10,000 from District 2 funds for its Discover Dance Program and expanded educational outreach programs. 38, needs to be voted at the conference. Approve acceptance of the grant award from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the Community Development Block Grant Program in the amount of $1,713,521 with no local match, and authorize the president of the commission to execute all documents associated with this award.
So moved.
Number 39 needs to be voted at the conference. Approve acceptance of a grant award from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the Home Program in the amount of $604,335, with a 25% in-kind or cash match, and authorize the president of the commission to execute all documents associated with this award.
So moved.
Number 40, consider taking the following action on bids. We sent a ward of bid 138-21 grounds. So, just take the action on bids, all the bids.
If you go to the second page, page 9, bid number 100-21, which is a... For public works with Bayou Concrete for concrete that we purchased, we're gonna take that off. I've had some discussion with Neil and Ricky, and we're gonna do a little bit more exploring before we grant that bid, mainly because the price is too high, and there may be some other options for buying the concrete other than having to bid because we... Because the amount that we spend every year doesn't exceed what requires a bid, so we may just...
So, that bid will be removed?
We're gonna, yeah, remove that one if you don't mind. If y'all don't have any objection to that, I guess.
I'd like to know more about it. That's typically not how we do that.
Well, and I didn't know, so I called Ricky because I looked... When I was going through the agenda, and I looked at this bid for $285, I picked up the phone and called Bayou Concrete and asked for a price of concrete, and I was quoted a price of $126, and I think their bid is double that, and I think they're just trying to gouge the eyeballs out of the county, number one, and I don't think that's right. But number two, after some research, we determined that we don't spend $15,000 a year in concrete, which would give us the option to just purchase the concrete as needed from whichever concrete company in Mobile has the best price and can get it delivered to us in a timely manner.
Do we not competitively check these, even though they don't exceed the $15,000 threshold? I mean, we don't just automatically award them without doing research, right?
Yeah, my understanding is it was competitively bid, and that's the lowest responsible bidder, but I'll check with Susan to clarify, but usually when she has a bid recommendation, it has gone through the bid process, so...
So, is this...
That's correct.
Can we legally do what's being suggested?
But one other thing to consider, commissioners, is the delivery time that we're seeing on concrete right now. Putting our projects back at least two weeks, we can have things formed and ready to pour, can't get the concrete delivered. We order small quantities at one time, and so they often push us back to the back of the line. This not bidding the concrete would... This not bidding the concrete would allow us flexibility to go to any number of suppliers and not tie us to one.
So that's what's being suggested here, is rather than being tied to one, that we can go to a number of different contractors to buy smaller quantities?
That's correct.
What's the dollar amount, Neil? Is that the 15,000? We're going to spend less than 15,000?
We spent $14,594 this past year.
This year? Okay. That's pretty, 15 is a threshold.
It's pretty close, right.
So is that typical?
Yes, ma'am.
The 14? Okay, I would just feel a whole lot more comfortable. I'm willing to pull this off, but Mr. Ross, you know, we put out a bid, and I just want to make sure that we have.
We meet all our legal obligations as far as the bid process goes. If, because it's falling below, but at any point, if it goes above the 14,000, then, I mean, we just need to know what the ramifications are.
I think our option at that point is if it goes above, to bid it at that point for the remainder of the year. From talking, Dana, am I incorrect in that?
I'll check with Susan. I know that there's a $15,000.
I know there's a $15,000 threshold, but I'm not sure of the legal requirements, and so I defer to Jay on that. If we put out a bid and have, excuse me, how would we rescind it in that process? I defer to the county attorney.
I'm looking at the bid tabulation.
Mr. Ross, could we just?
We'll deal with this on Monday? Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, and give you time. I don't mean to put you on the spot.
Yeah, you don't have to be on the spot.
But just to make sure.
And I didn't mean to put anybody on the spot, but I think, and I kind of started looking at these bids because Brian and I were having a conversation last week about some of the projects in the county that have increased by almost 50 or 60%. And I don't think it's right for contractors to come in here and charge the county that kind of money just because they can and then try to blame it on material costs.
Right. We completely agree with you, and we're all about, we're all getting the best bang for the buck here. We just need to make sure that we've dotted our i's and crossed our t's legally speaking because we can't get in that kind of hot water. So if Mr. Ross will give us assurances that everything's good, we're good.
That sounds good.
Adopt a Sole Source Resolution Approving the Purchase of Purist Air Equipment in the Amount of $36,312 for the Sheriff's Office. Number forty-two. Adopt a Sole Source Resolution Approving Renewal of a Software Maintenance Contract with Dude Solutions, Inc., for the Inventory Edge and Maintenance Edge in the Amount of $30,824 for the Building Maintenance Department. Forty-three. Approve Renewal of a Support Maintenance Agreement with Thompson Cat under the Current Purchasing Cooperative Sourcewell Contract in a Total Amount of $36,866 for the Metro Jail Barracks, Government Plaza Annex, and Building Maintenance Department. Number forty-four. Approve Contract with Baker High School Parent Teacher Student Association in the Amount of $5,000 from District Three Funds to Purchase Wrestling Mats for Baker High School Wrestling Program. Number forty-five. Approve Contract with Murphy High School Parent Teacher Student Association in the Amount of $2,097 from District Three Funds to Purchase Uniforms for Murphy High School. Forty-six. Approve Amending Annual Appropriation Contract with Mobile County Emergency Medical Services in the Amount of $312,000 from General Fund, other agency support to Purchase a Quick Response Vehicle. And Mark Turner is here if you have any questions on it.
I'd appreciate it if you would just talk about the need that we're responding to with this one. Mark, do I say? Oh, there you are. Okay.
Morning.
Specifically, the need for the specialty vehicles, is that what you're requesting? So we have some issues with.
Would you pull the mic up to you?
Okay. Is that better?
Much better.
So we've had an ongoing issue out in the county with some difficult access roadways, and I don't even know if we can call them roadways in some cases. There's certainly a lot of areas that are difficult to get to out there, and sometimes it's really difficult to get an ambulance down these roads and paths. And so we're trying to create a better way to manage that situation. We have an emergency, and go in there and get those patients in, you know, a vehicle and bring them out to the ambulance so they can be then transported to the hospital. So it's a combination kind of plan. Four-wheel-drive vehicles will allow us to make that transfer of care, but we're also planning to utilize those medics out in the field to respond to other types of emergencies and kind of increase our efficiency, basically, within the system as a whole and increase our ability to respond to other types of emergencies also.
I know. I had asked him to price out these emergency response vehicles. We've had situations, I know I've had them in my district, where these roads, and they're private roads. It's not like the county can go in and make repairs or improvements because we're legally not allowed to do that. But yet, there are people who live on these roads, a lot of them are elderly and in poor health, and when they get in distress medically, in distress, they call an ambulance, and an ambulance can't make it down the road. They're having to actually send in pickup trucks and anything that can, you know, with four-wheel drive that can get in and out, and then they transport them to an ambulance. Well, if you've got somebody in cardiac arrest, then that could be an issue. And so what, this vehicle, these vehicles will actually be medically equipped, correct?
That's correct. So we'll have a paramedic on them, we'll have all the supplies that we normally have on the ambulances, and, you know, bad roads aren't a new problem, but what we are dealing with is a decreased response in some of these areas from the fire departments to membership or COVID or whatever the case is. So there's multiple reasons why we feel like this is a good model to go to. And also, as far as efficiency, I feel like implementing this model will save us some money versus fully, you know, two people on an ambulance that can't get down a road somewhere and make that transfer. We put one person out there we can utilize in a much more efficient way, so saving money that way.
This is three vehicles, really one that's sort of, they're located so that they can respond in each of the districts on a timely basis, right?
That's right. Correct. So we would like to, some of our, we still have challenges, obviously, in some of our most remote areas. I'll say Mount Vernon, Dauphin Island, Alabama Fort, those places. So we want to move resources closer to some of these areas as well, and that'll just, it's on defense. You know, that's the best way I can describe it, but it's on defense with one person in a more capable vehicle versus two people in an ambulance.
Well, this is, Commissioner Huss, I'm glad you moved on that because I've gotten same kind of calls, and when people are in distress, they get scared, and sometimes situations get a lot more tense than they might otherwise be because the families in crisis, they're just trying to get help. So I think this is going to be good news for a lot of those people on, oh, Lord, some of those roads up in the north end where they've been bringing people out to the highway, you know, just putting them in a vehicle, trying to get them out there so an ambulance can get to them.
There are some occasions where we have to call a helicopter in some of those situations to get to a remote location, whether it's on a residence or, you know, hunting land or whatever it is, and that's just, hopefully, that's less necessary because that's a really expensive bill to put on somebody.
Not to mention how much more time it takes to actually get that set up and moving. When do you think this will be operational? I know that there's a lead time here on ordering the vehicles, but when are they anticipated to be in?
The latest is, I'm hoping by the first of the calendar year that we can get the four-wheel-drive vehicles. Now, I plan on implementing this quick response model before that with a two-wheel-drive vehicle that we currently have that we're going to, you know, reassign. So to be fully functional first of the year, but we're going to start testing that model and start responding in that way before the end of the year.
Great. Thank you.
Will these vehicles belong to the county or to Mobile County EMS?
I think that's something we need to understand. There is a mix, or in the past, there has been a mix, that the county has owned some ambulances at different points in time, and then EMS, the organization, has purchased ambulances at different points in time. I think there's three left. Their county-owned, the rest are the company-owned, you know, EMS-owned. For us, whatever's the right way to do it is fine with me. We're happy to, whatever allows us to use the vehicles and get out there and provide the service is fine with me.
Yeah.
I think we're going to apply through, you know, the grant process and some of the, you know, COVID relief funds and things, I think is what our intent is. So there may be some, to answer your question, there may be, it may be that the county has to apply directly for that versus EMS.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Number forty-seven.
Okay, number forty-seven. Renewal Memorandum of Understanding with the Administration Office of Courts to Provide Funding for an Employee Assigned to Process Matters Related to Incarcerated Persons for, to be Paid from the Metro Jail Budget. Commissioners, we have a possible add-on from the Mobile County Sheriff's Office. They're applying for a grant. This grant is in partnership with the CDC and DOJ to Combat COVID in Confined Facilities. They've been working on it. They started yesterday. It is time-sensitive, so they're going to try to get it into us today.
And also, at the eleventh hour, turned in a request. It's a sponsorship for.
A sponsorship to appropriate $500 of the education funds to Miss Mobile Bay Organization for Miss Mobile Bay and Outstanding Team Program Gold Sponsorship.
Thank you.
And that's it.
Approve the Below-Listed Annual Work Orders to Furnish.
Is your mic on?
It's on. It's just not up. Okay. Approve the Below-Listed Annual Work Orders to Furnish Labor, Equipment, and Materials as Needed for Fiscal Year 2021 to 2022 for the Following. Number two. Approve Permit Agreement for the Accommodation of Utility Facilities on Public Right-of-Way with the City of Sims for the Installation, Operation, and Maintenance of Flashing Beacons for Notification of Emergency Vehicles Leaving the City of Sims Fire Stations, number three and number one. Number three. Authorize Acquisition of Property and Acceptance of Right-of-Way Deeds and Easements from the Following Property Owners for the Following Projects. Number four. Approve Renewing the Contract with Earl Dudley Incorporated for a One-Year Subscription of I-NET Service for the Period from September first, 2021, through August thirty-first, 2022, in the Amount of $1,200. Number five. Approve Right-of-Way and or Easement Agreements for Track One in the Amount of $250 for MCP 01220 Creola Access Loop Road North Triple R, and this is one of our Rebuild Alabama projects. Number six. Approve Consentings to the Assignment of Six Existing Professional Engineering Contracts Between Mobile County and Goodwin-Millsing-Caywood and Caywood, Inc., to Goodwin-Millsing-Caywood LLC. The Six Existing Projects are as follows. Number seven.
And so, excuse me, they're assuming, the LLC is assuming all the obligations?
That's correct.
Okay.
Number seven. Approve Agreement for the Operation and Maintenance of Traffic Control Signals and/or Roadway Lighting with the State of Alabama, acting by and through the Alabama Department of Transportation for the Operation and Maintenance of Roadway Lighting at the Proposed Roundabout on State Route 188 at County Road 19, which is Irvington-Bayou Battery Highway. And this is an Atrip Two project, and it's also one of our pay-as-you-go projects. Number eight.
Is that a, what's the split on that with the state?
The.
Not financially, I guess, percentage-wise?
The state is doing all of the design, it's my understanding. They're going to oversee the construction, and our pay-as-you-go program, and I'm sorry, Commissioner, I can't give you the exact amount right now, is a fixed amount that Brian has said that we don't have the money to overrun that.
Okay.
Number, and if you would like me to give you that number, I can get it in the mail.
I was just trying to figure out if it's a two-third, one-third, or one-third, two-third?
No, it's a fixed amount.
Okay, fixed, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Number eight. Approve the Reappointments of James Russell and Scott Peach to Serve as Members of the Board of Appeals of the Building Code and Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance for a Five-Year Term Ending March ninth, 2025. Item nine is approve Appointments of David Schuford and Bill Partridge, Jr. to Serve as Members of the Board of Appeals of the Building Code and Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance for a Five-Year Term Ending March ninth, 2025. Item ten. Approve Preliminary Plaid Only of Heritage Lakes, which is 370 lots on Airport Boulevard and Eliza Jordan Road in District Two. Item eleven. Approve Preliminary and Final Plaid of Resubdivision of Lots One and Three of the Resubdivision of Lot Two, Joe Junior Subdivision, which is three lots off Three Notch Kroner Road in District Three, and also approve Preliminary and Final Plaid of Duff Home Place, which is two lots, Fairview Highland Drive in District Two. Number twelve. Approve Setting the Following Speed Limits as Listed Below. And do y'all want me to read through those? Okay. Number thirteen. Approve, and that incorrectly says approve a resolution, that will not be a resolution. It's approve setting the Following Speed Limits as Listed Below for Roads, Segments of Roads, and Subdivision Streets. Item fourteen is awarding the bid for CIP 2019-002B Part Two, Mobile County Soccer Complex Concessions and Restroom Facility to Ben M. Radcliffe Contractor, Inc., for their low bid in the Amount of $1,237,771.
Restrooms.
Yep. They're expensive. Item fifteen is approve Agreement for Relocation of Utility Facilities in Conflict with Proposed Roadway Improvements with Mobile County Water, Sewer, and Fire Protection Authority for Project MCR 2018-009 Bush Lane and Carroll Plantation Road. The Agreement Allows for Thirty Working Days to Complete the Relocation Activities at No Cost to Mobile County. Number sixteen is approve Right-of-Way and or Easement Agreements for Track One in the Amount of $200 and Track Nine in the Amount of $500 for our Project MCR 2018-106B, which is some bridge replacements in the City of Pritchard. Item seventeen is approve Right-of-Way and or Easement Agreement for Track Six in the Amount of $1,018 for MCR 2018-205 Barlow Road and Havens Road. Number eighteen. Approve Hold Harmless Indemnity Agreements for Fiscal Year 2021 through 2022 for the Use of County Equipment from the Following. Number nineteen is approve authorizing to advertise and receive bids for MCR 2018-006 Jeff Hamilton Road at Johnson Road West and South Intersection Improvements, which is going to be a roundabout. Item twenty. Approve authorizing to advertise and receive bids for Project 2018-305 Johnson Road West Grade Drang Basin Ave. Item twenty-one. Authorizing to advertise and receive bids for Projects MCR 2014-306 Joe Carl Road South and West and Old Military Road.
They'll be happy to see that on the agenda.
And that's it, yeah, for now.
Thank you. That was one item on here that may, no, it was actually on the administration agenda, the one about the $10 million for dirt roads.
From the conservation?
Yeah. This is, this is from Restore Act Funds from BP, and there will be.
What number was that?
That's what I'm trying to.
Number twenty-eight.
Number twenty-eight.
Okay.
And just, this is the kind of thing that will, people on dirt roads will notice, but there's some very specific qualifications for how you fall, I mean, it's, this is I mean, this is really an environmental program, and so it's not going to be ten million dollars that we can do any dirt roads. This won't even make a dent, but it will have special rules. And so before anybody gets too excited, we need to get the rules out there. So just that bit of information.
I'm not asking, y'all got me scared to ask any questions anymore now.
Just keep them coming.
You, priceless, priceless. Okay, anything else? Mr. Ross, anything?
No.
Okay. Well, we stand adjourned, have a.